Welcome, everybody, to the August 13, 2018, meeting of the County Council. I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item is invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mike Klinghammer, and I'd like to introduce Rick Denon. Demean?
Demin.
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 From the First Free Will Baptist Church of O'Fallon.
Let's pray. Father, we bow before you tonight, and we acknowledge you as the giver of life. And, Lord, as we live in a world that seems to get more and more complicated, we're grateful that, Father, we can look to you for our wisdom, for our direction, and that, Lord, through you, we can value life. Lord, we're also grateful today that we have liberty, and that, Lord, we ask that you would help us to not abuse it. And, Lord, we're grateful for leadership, grateful for those that have been placed in authority. Lord, we pray for wisdom for them, Lord, for boldness in the decisions that they have to make. And, Lord, we're grateful that in life and liberty and leadership, that, Lord, we have your light to guide us and direct us. So, Lord, we look to you. Lord, we ask that everything that we do may bring honor and glory to your name, and, Lord, that it might be beneficial to our fellow man. Have your way tonight, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brice.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is conditional use permit. Bill for introduction and public comment, Bill Number 4622.
Bill Number 4622, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Dave Hammond, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 18-08, to reduce minimum lot width requirement from 70 feet to 60 feet for a lot in the R1A Single Family Residential District to Bearded Lady LLC property owner and Justin Renshaw applicant. Mr. Meyer, do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Mr. Myers, would you proceed?
Sure, thank you. This is an application by Justin Renshaw to allow an existing vacant lot to be narrowed from the minimum of 70 feet to no less than 60 feet wide. And you may or may not know this, but within our single-family zoning district, there's what you might call a tiny house provision. In other words, there's a way that applicants, developers can come to the county council and apply for lots that are narrower than typical, or smaller than typical, or with homes that are a little bit smaller than would otherwise be allowed. But in this case, we're not talking about a whole subdivision or a whole development. We're talking about one single lot that's vacant, where the applicant is wishing to build a house that will meet all of the lot requirements, including the minimum house size, the minimum side yard setbacks, minimum lot area, except for the width. And the reason that the applicant is asking for the width reduction is that there are two lots. There's an existing house, an existing subdivision. When they added on a garage, a few feet of the garage lapped over onto this vacant lot. And now the applicant has bought both of these lots and the house, is in the process of fixing up the house, and he wants to invest in the neighborhood and build an infill home on this vacant lot. To do so, technically, we would need to, in order to meet the setbacks, get permission to allow this lot to be 63 feet wide instead of 70. And that's the corrects of the application. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this, held a public hearing, and recommended approval as conforming with conditional use permit requirements of Section 405.510B. And with that, I'd like to recognize the applicant, Justin Renshaw.
Mr. Renshaw, I will need to swear you in, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yeah, I'm just here to answer any questions. I think Mr. Myers pretty much described the project. We're just trying to build a single-family home on this vacant lot that fits the aesthetic and the size of the other homes in the neighborhood. And as he said, we are renovating the existing home that is there. And we're just trying to do an infill project and build this home with the same standards that are set for the rest of the subdivision.
Anybody on the council have any questions?
I'll just say good luck to you.
Thank you.
And I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do have one speaker on this. It would be Arnie Deanoff.
You very much members of the county council.
Excuse me, I need to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and county resident. And Bill Number 4622 deals with 16 North Meadow Drive. It's off of North Pershing Circle. And so my first question is, is did the county council follow the state statute and our county charter and properly notify both the municipalities of the City of O'Fallon and the City of Lake St. Louis, which is your dual obligation under state statute, within one mile of those boundary limits? And the second issue is, isn't this an issue that may be a hardship and is not an issue for the county council? But this issue should appear before the county board of adjustment to investigate and find out if, find out all the merits of this case, either vote that it's a hardship under the definition of state statute, that it meets that definition of statutory requirement of a hardship. This is a single lot situation. I don't think, under the county council rules, that it meets the definition for the county council to get involved in this. Rather, I'd like to see the council refer it to the county board of adjustment. This is a single lot situation, and we're not talking about an entire subdivision. For those reasons, I ask that you refer this matter for approval or denial under a hardship under the requirements of the state statute to the county board of adjustment. Thank you.
That is the only speaker filled out a card.
Okay. Wonder if I could have a motion.
I would make a motion that we amend the agenda and take our two resolutions that we have and move those forward. Seating is a premium tonight, and I appreciate the robotics team giving up their seat and holding up the wall for us in the back tonight, before we get a chance to recognize you.
Aye.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to Resolution 1805. The first one, David Zills, regarding the director of robotics at Lutheran High School.
And I'll read the title.
Yes.
Resolution 18-05, sponsored by councils as a whole. A resolution recognizing Dave Zills, director of robotics at Lutheran High School of St. Charles, for showing extraordinary leadership and making significant contributions to the St. Charles community through volunteer work and the creation of a robotics program.
Is Mr. Zills there tonight?
There he is.
Mr. Zills, if you could come up front. Do you want to tell us a little bit about the first program and a little bit about the robotics program at LHS?
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So First Robotics is a worldwide organization that instills hands-on activities for children from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. It's built around robots competition, where the students have a chance to design, build, and compete with robots. And at the earlier ages, they do that with Legos. And at the older ages, like the high school teams, they do it with industrial-grade robots that they design and build themselves. I've been blessed with the opportunity to start the program out at Lutheran High School on Mexico Road. You may have noticed there's a big hole in the ground out there right now. Some of the work that we've done in STEM has led to actually building an entire new wing that's going to house a dedicated STEM area for Lutheran High School and also be open for the rest of the community as well.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to vote on this first, or talk about it, but a little bit, but tonight's kind of STEM night and robotics recognition night unofficially, but that's how it is. You know, for robotics teams to happen, you have to have teachers who are willing to sponsor. So we appreciate you stepping up and leading the way. STEM is obviously very important for our county moving forward. And I know the EDC and a number of other places have stepped up, and they recognize an outstanding STEM student every year from our both public and high schools all across the county. So we appreciate you stepping up and leading the way in doing this program, starting at an early age and getting them in.
Do we want to do, do you want to do photos?
Figured we'd vote on it first, and then we'll actually present it to him, if that's okay.
Sure.
Resolution 1805, a resolution recognizing Dave Zills, director of robotics at Lutheran High School, St. Charles, for showing extraordinary leadership and making significant contributions to the St. Charles community through volunteer work and the creation of a robotics program. Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brice.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Ooh, I should have thought this through a little better.
Do you have your, are any of your students up here with you?
One of our students is. This is Ms. Elizabeth Simon. She is our team captain right now.
Yeah, bring them up.
If we could get a photo with you, I'd like to present you this resolution. Come on up. We'll flank you. How's that?
Well, things have come a long way since I was in high school. We had metal shop and woodworking. Now we got robotic. Next resolution is 1806.
And this will be read in its entirety. Resolution 18-06, sponsored by councils as a whole. A resolution recognizing and congratulating the Wentzville School District Ratchet Rockers Robotics Team 1706 on the achievement of earning the title of 2018 Missouri State First Robotics Competition FRC Champions. Whereas the St. Charles County Council is pleased to recognize and applaud the Wentzville School District WSD Ratchet Rockers Robotics Team 1706 for earning the title of 2018 Missouri State First Robotics Competition FRC Champion. And whereas the Ratchet Rockers Team ranked second in Missouri after a successful season, was part of a three-team alliance that competed in a one-day tournament held at Liberty High School on June 9, which was co-hosted by their team and the Lutheran Robateers Team 4329, and featured the top 25 teams from across the state. And whereas the three-team alliances all competed with 120-pound industrial-grade robots that were designed, built, and operated by high school students, and the Ratchet Rockers Team Alliance went undefeated in elimination rounds before winning in the final round of competition. And whereas this year, the Ratchet Rockers Team designed a highly competitive robot named Scorpion, with unique features to meet the demands of this year's video game-themed competition, and the team's hard work and dedication put into Scorpion's creation earned it the Peer-Based Robot of the Year Award. And whereas the Ratchet Rockers Team was founded in 2005, consisting of one mentor, two sponsors, and three students, and has grown to a membership of 51 school students from Holt, Liberty, and Timberland High Schools, 23 mentors with expertise in multiple areas including programming, design, electronics, engineering, social media, fundraising, public relations, business, and grant writing, with lead mentor Darrell Woodridge providing the overall supervision of the team. And whereas other accolades of the Ratchet Rockers Team include being chosen in 2008 as one of four United States first for inspiration and recognition of science and technology teams, to be featured in a PBS national documentary titled "Gearing Up," winning the St. Louis Regional Competition with an alliance in 2009 and 2017, receiving Innovation in Control Awards in 2010, 2015, and 2017, a Creative Award in 2011, Engineering Excellence Awards in 2012, 2013, and 2014, and Industrial Design Award in 2017, and winning the Missouri State Championship in 2016. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Charles County Council hereby honors and congratulates the Ratchet Rockers Robotics Team 1706 on their outstanding accomplishments over the years, earning the Peer-Based Robot of the Year Award, and for their championship win of the 2018 Missouri State First Robotics Competition FRC.
Thank you. You know, it's really special when you win a state award, so congratulations. We'll go ahead and vote on this. All those in favor?
Oh, you want me to read the title again?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Read the title again. Resolution 1806, a resolution recognizing and congratulating the Wentzville School District Ratchet Rockers Robotics Team 1706 on the achievement of earning the title of 2018 Missouri State First Robotics Competition FRC Champions. Councilmember Brice.
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
I should ask, is there any other comments from the council, too, who'd like to comment on this?
No, but you guys, you want to take a picture, Mike, with, you guys can all.
You guys come up front.
Yeah.
We'd love to get a picture with you. We've got room down here. I don't know who wants to be in charge of this, but I'd like to copy for every one of you the resolution that we passed tonight. We like to reward state championships of all shapes and sizes and makes, so we appreciate you guys very much. We have passed resolutions recognizing people who won baseball championships, basketball state championships, and we want you to understand that robotics is just as important, if not more so. So I would give it to you, who are holding the middle. I'll slide out here at the side, so I know where to screw up the picture.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for the Callaway Ferry Company, known as the Golden Eagle Ferry, and let's start with that.
I have no cards for that one. Unless there's, no speakers. No speakers?
Mr. Deanoff wants to speak on this one. And with that, the alarms go off.
Thank you very much again, councilmembers. Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident. In reference to the Golden Eagle Ferry license renewal, we rely on this transportation service. Our families rely on this ferry shuttle service to tickets to Calhoun County during the fall and during peak seasons for vegetables. It shuttles families between St. Charles County and Calhoun County, and I think that the families rely on this issue. It's relied on for medical needs, for people transportation, to doctor's appointments, for economic development of our commerce and shopping. A lot of people from Calhoun County don't have the stores and shops. They shop in St. Peters, O'Fallon, and St. Charles to go to the grocery store and to go to the Costco and other type of things to give them their day-to-day needs. I would like to see you enter into a joint intergovernmental agreement, and I'd like to see that we waive the license fee required. I see that they've paid that license fee, but I'd like to see the county reimburse that and give it back to them. I do not agree that the county is recommending waiver of the bonding requirement. I think that also liability and insurance, those requirements need to stay intact to ensure that if there's an accident, that anybody traveling on that boat is purely protected and that any property liability or damages are taken care of. Let's be a good neighbor. Let's not profit on our neighbor, people in Calhoun County, who, in essence, will pass on this license fee to the cost of it, to the users and passengers. For those reasons, I'm asking that you give back the license fee. I'm not sure exactly how much it is. That you do not waive the bonding requirement, and that you don't waive the liability or insurance requirements. I appreciate you hearing me. Thank you.
Okay. Next public hearing is on traffic regulations. Do we have any speakers tonight?
And I do have a speaker, Dennis Davenport.
Good evening, members of the council. I live in Metal Ridge subdivision, which abuts the new Veterans Park on the northwest side. And I apologize, because I'm here by myself tonight. There's two specific streets within our subdivision that dead-end at the park's boundary. One of them is a major thoroughfare, which is 35 feet wide. And then there's a secondary road called Timothy Ridge, which my house abuts on one side, which is only 24 feet wide. Now, we've had problems with people parking alongside my house and in front of my neighbor's house, which we're the two families most impacted, where we sit on that dead end, where they park and limit access to our property. And then also, there's the danger where we can't get a fire truck or an ambulance in there for those vehicles parking there while people get out to look at the construction going on, or literally park and walk into the park. And the reason that the access is there for those folks is the park designers put in a walking path, which is approximately 70 feet just off the end of that street, so they can park and just stroll down and get on that walking path and then go on into the park. Currently, the only vehicle access to the park is approximately a quarter-mile away off of Kiska Road, and that's the only way you can get vehicles in there. So people, especially in our subdivision or the apartment complexes, which line 94, they're going to drive in there, park their vehicles on our street, and then walk in without having to make that big circular drive. So we're requesting residential parking only signs be placed along Timothy Ridge. We've had every single homeowner on our street sign the petition, which we submitted. Mrs. Sevic, who's the other homeowner, provided you folks with a letter, I believe, and she covered all the salient points pretty extensively. So like I said, we're requesting those signs be in place, and I would hope that you would approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No other speakers on that?
No, that was all I had.
Excuse me, I'd like to comment real briefly, please.
Did you fill out a card on this?
Yes, I did. I don't know if I spelled out for the subject, but I'd be real brief. I would like to ask the county council to approve Number 2, which is the establishment of a speed limit 30 miles per hour for Research Park Drive from Route 94 to Weldon Springs Height Drive. It's requested by our partners at the Missouri Department of Transportation, and they are the experts, and I ask that the council approve their request. Thank you.
No other speakers? Going to close the public comment or the public hearing and move on to public comment. The public comment will allow three people to speak in support and in opposition of each topic. If the council desires, we can allow additional speakers. So with that, let's start with our first speaker, please.
Okay. In favor of Bill 4631, Joe Aiello.
My name is Joe Aiello. I own Aiello's Cigar Bar for the last 21 years. I do not serve food in my establishment. My business is mostly tobacco. I do have a small bar. I'm not sure if I heard right, but supposedly it's, and nobody should be denied their dream job because of smoking in public places. Well, I do have my dream job, and that's owning a tobacco store where we can smoke. It is a legal product, the way I understand it. So why would you take my dream job from me? I'm the one that put up the half a million dollars to start this business. How is it right for the general public to come in and tell me what I can and cannot do in my business? Can we ask the council questions? We're not allowed to ask the council questions? I was approached by somebody to sign a petition. One was cannabis, one was smoking. I asked about the cigar bar up the street, and the young man, I asked him, I said, will I be able to smoke in the cigar bar up the street? And he said, well, I don't see why not. You sell tobacco. And then I informed him who I was and how he's misinforming people. So how is it right for these people just to go about, get signatures, tell people the wrong thing, then come in and tell me what to do with my business? I don't quite understand. I don't quite understand that. I do not sell food. My question is, is all the people in the blue shirts behind me, if you ban me from smoking, will you come into my store and purchase product? Probably not, because you don't like smoke, you don't like tobacco. So, why would you harm me, my family business? You say it doesn't hurt sales. How do you know that? I talked to one of the owners of the Kriegers in O'Fallon a few years back. He said their sales dropped 20% when the smoking ban hit. I don't believe that Kriegers is there anymore. Doesn't put people out of business? I'd like to see the proof. I'd like to see the proof also that sales don't get hurt. An easy way of solving this problem could be what we saw when we walked in tonight. What's on the front door? No smoking. Pretty simple, very simple. If you allow smoking, you say it's a smoking establishment. No smoking is allowed. It's pretty straightforward. I don't know how people can just go get signatures and try to tell you what to do. It's your business. The business I worked 60 hours a week for for 21 years, and they're going to try and hurt my sales? Dream job.
Time's up, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you made your point. Next speaker, please.
Donald Young.
Can you hear me all right? I might have to bend over a little bit. I've been a resident here in St. Charles over 40 years, and unfortunately, you know, years ago, I had, you know, I've been here before, and you all know me, but I had cancer and caused it by smoking for 34 years when I started 14 years old and 48 years old. And so, I was diagnosed with throat cancer, went through two and a half years in the hospital, ate during surgeries. And then you all know that I started going to school, and I've talked to a lot of your children and your grandchildren in school in St. Charles County and city. And I don't know, I'm really sorry disappointed, Mike, you know, you're supporting this bill. You know, I think it's up to the citizens of St. Charles County, give them the vote, let them vote whichever way they want, either smoking or non-smoking. And it's just that simple. The man was talking about there, it needs to be voted on by the people, not by the council or faculty or anybody else in the area. And I'd say, you know, but as a result of my old issues, I, you know, can't be around a secondhand smoker. So, now I'm getting kind of called a, you know, somebody with a disability. So, it means I couldn't go in the building, even in the casinos where they allow smoking and gamble or throw a few bucks around. I couldn't go in a restaurant that allows smoking because I'm disabled now, disability. That's how they classify me. Am I supposed to get a lawyer and sue all these restaurants and all these people because I can't go in their restaurant because the government says, Don, you're disabled? I know I'm disabled. That's why I don't go in there. And on your door there, you do have a sign that says, no smoking. You have a sign there that says, no guns. You can't let people walk in with a gun, or as you would. So, you put it on your door, nobody comes in with a gun. We know that. But for some people, you know, recently, that's what we've been out there, and had our signatures turned in. Mike, you had 3,000 people in your district sign these things. But I just want to know, is getting, when I observe people are talking, saying the same thing, and all this year about secondhand smoke has not changed one bit a matter of fact, it's gotten a lot worse. A lot of our young people are still buying tobacco in St. Charles, but the chemicals and toxic gas, you know, it's in secondhand smoke. You can put it into the ventilation, but you don't get all the chemicals out of that tobacco. It goes right back into, you know, where you're at. So, Don, you know, these things don't work either, do they? Each of us deserve a strong, comprehensive protection from secondhand smoke. And every person, a St. Charles resident and employee, has the right to do this. And I talked to a woman that worked down in the casino, and she deals hard, you know, and she don't smoke. And she's like, she's got to stand there, and the customers in there, they're spending money, that's what they're for, and trying to win money. And it goes in their face, and she says, I can't do anything about it. I've got to stand there and let everybody, you know, and load the smoke in my face.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up.
But I think you need not only to take care of the residents, you need to take care of the casino workers, too. They deserve this smoke-free area, too.
Next speaker, please.
Carol Gold.
My name is Carol Gold, and my husband and I own the South 94 Bistro Bar and Grill for 17 years. And for 17 years, it's been a great business. But I have to reiterate on some of the things that he had said as a business owner. We work hard. We really do. We pay a lot of taxes to be business owners. Okay? I believe in freedom of choice. It's a choice to patronize an establishment. It's a choice not to go to a grocery store you don't like. It's a choice. He said it perfectly. These minors, these young people of America, they're still buying cigarettes. Let's be hypocritical. We're still buying cigarettes. I'm sorry, but I've seen smoking and non-smoking. I've sat on both sides. I'm a non-smoker now. Three years ago, four years ago, I was a smoker. My base to this is still the principle of choice. When you're a business owner, it's not easy. It really isn't. You carry liability insurance that, for God's sake, under the duram log, you cover people for four hours after they leave your establishment. That is a very costly insurance to some bars and grills, okay? Small business owners, okay? So, you sit here and you add up all this, and you take away even 10% of our income. 10%. That's a lot. Then, we're going to have people outside of our establishment smoking. So, what does it do? What does it do? It does nothing. It takes away the choice of the patrons that patronize your bar. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Kristen Williams.
Sorry, did I just start? I am not a native of St. Charles, but I've lived here for the last 12 years, moving down from Wisconsin. And one of the first things I noticed, which quite frankly shocked me, coming from a smoke-free state, was the ability for people to still smoke indoors. To be asked smoking or non-smoking when choosing a restaurant literally floored me. I couldn't understand what was going on. So, when I asked to be part of Show Me Smoke Free and Smoke Free St. Charles County, it was a no-brainer for me. Since moving here, I've lived and worked in St. Charles, working for three different nonprofit organizations, and in each capacity, it has been to make St. Charles County a better place to live and for my children to grow up in. I believe that we, as a county, have a unique opportunity through collaborative efforts to be a county that could be the best in the nation when it comes to health, education, economics, and environment, and that cannot happen if we still allow smoking indoors. By voting yes for Bill 4631, you will not only confuse the voter, which I suspect is the plan, but you will single-handedly thwart the voice of 34,000-plus residents who signed the petition to bring Smoke Free St. Charles onto the ballot. Here's why I urge you to vote against Bill Number 4631. First, your community has spoken. You were elected to listen to your voters, so listen. Allow that language to come onto the vote, run, onto the ballot, and let your community vote. They will tell you what they want. Second, the casino will continue to thrive as a smoke-free establishment, and so will their employees. There's overwhelming evidence to support this in surrounding states. Third, the health of every resident should matter to you, but four pages of exemptions on 4631 indicate that only some matter. And finally, I think Steve Elman said it best in 2012, that he said, "I believe that when a regulation is passed to improve public health, exceptions to that regulation should be rationally related to the same public health goal. It would be totally irrational to require restaurant inspections but exempt Italian restaurants. If the purpose of the smoking ban is to protect the health of employees, there is no rational reason to exclude casino floor workers. If tobacco smoke is harmful, there is no reason to exempt cigar bars while regulating bars that will allow cigarette smoking." Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Larry Dubrowski.
Chair, members of the council. Dr. Elman, excuse me. Steve, I'm here on behalf of Mayor Sally Faith of the City of St. Charles. The mayor was out ill. She went through a procedure, and she's in recovery, and so I wanted to speak on this bill. Wanted to provide you some facts about the casino. For the City of St. Charles, the Ameristar is the largest employer in the entire city. It generates about $12 to $14 million annually. To give you a perspective on that, our entire fire department, which is five stations, 79 members of that fire department, that's more than their entire annual operating cost. And with that 14, that $12 to $14 million, portion of that's dedicated to ongoing law enforcement and public safety and part of its capital. The portion that's to the general fund for public safety is about $7.6 million. The rest of it goes to capital. From our research and from what we're aware of, smoking, non-smoking at a casino has a negative revenue impact of about 20%. So, if you look at the money that Ameristar's generating, that's about $1.5 million of ongoing revenue to the general fund and about $1 million in capital. Currently, we're working on, from the police department, every year, we're trying to add an additional police officer to catch back up to where we were for the law enforcement numbers back in the recessions. We haven't gotten back to that. We had to lay off people, and we didn't fill those positions. We're in this steady track of trying to add an additional police officer every year. The $1.5 million hit that we would take would seriously impact how we're going about that. As you all know, we're trying to deal with some law enforcement issues on Main Street. Again, a $1.5 million hit on that will have an impact on that as well. And obviously, $1 million a year in the operating, I'm sorry, on the capital side has an impact as well. But I will tell you from a personal standpoint, I'm not a smoker, and so when people hear, I'm just providing you facts. But what I do believe in is democracy, and our system is built and our country's built on democracy. And so, from our perspective, all we're asking the county council to do is put it on the ballot, let the voters choose, and then that make, they can make that decision. And so, I'm here again just to add some facts for what's going on, the impact to the city. Again, it has a major financial impact. May have to have us look at what type of services we'd have to cut and that financial impact. So, as you make that decision, I know it's county-wide, but from a city perspective, it does have a big impact, and I wanted to share that information and give you that as you make that decision. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Could I ask this gentleman to stick around when we discuss the bill?
Would you mind sticking around?
Sure. Thank you.
We're not going to get into that question-answer session here. Next speaker, please.
Karen Engler.
Good evening, members of the council and county executive Elman. My name is Karen Engler. I am a longtime resident of St. Charles County. Hi, Mike. I am also a representative of the American Heart Association, one of the over 40 endorsing organizations of Show Me Smoke Free and Smoke Free St. Charles County. Also, I wanted to be here tonight to provide a few facts as well. Facts are really important. Science is really important. I was really glad to see you recognize the STEM organization, right? Science. And the science is really clear on this issue. There is simply no safe level of secondhand smoke. Smoking sections don't work, right? It's like having a ping section in a pool and a non- ping section in a pool. It just doesn't work, right? It's the same thing with smoking sections. They just simply don't work. You know, as a public health person, our focus is on protecting every single worker. And there's over 1,500 workers right now at Ameristar, 1,500, that are not protected. That's not to mention the countless bars and restaurants and hotel employees that are not protected. And in the bill you're proposing, with four pages of exemptions, you are picking winners and losers in public health, and that is simply not right. It's really not. One thing I'd really like you to consider is some numbers I have for you. Councilman Cronin, 4,926, that's the number of people from your district that signed a petition to have this put on the ballot, a comprehensive measure. Councilman Brazel, 5,046. Councilman Elam, 4,991, and I was one of them. Councilman Hammond, co-sponsoring this bill, 4,741 people from your district. Councilman Hollander, 5,008 people. Councilman Klinghammer, also co-sponsoring this bill, 4,945 people, including Don and Kay Young. Councilman White, 4,852 people. Those are your constituents. Those are people who took the time to participate in a democratic process and voice their concern and say, it's time. It's time for St. Charles County to be completely smoke-free and not pick winners and losers in health. They've done their part. We're asking you tonight, I'm asking you tonight, as a resident, as a mom, as a public health employee, to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the six speakers, and we had two other people fill out cards, and then one fill out, one past 7:00 o'clock. So, I have three more on Bill 4631.
I'd like to mention that we allow the other speakers that have filled out. Second. Second. All those in favor? All right. Pause. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Denise Menkowsky.
My name is Denise, and I reside and I work in St. Charles County. I spend my time assisting hundreds of people a month who are, on average, age of 40, make the switch from traditional cigarettes to vapor. Beyond vaping, there is something near and dear to me, and it's called liberty, the state of being free within society from oppressive restrictions imposed by authority on one's way of life or political views. A business owner should have the right to decide what is allowed in their establishment. The owner is the one who puts the countless hours into their establishment, along with blood, sweat, and tears. A well-funded association who has absolutely no investment in the establishment should not dictate, and certainly at the least should be open to compromise. Why do the health associations wish to act as the authority, and why do they insist on dictating to others? I have an open mind, and although I am not thrilled about an all-out smoking ban, I certainly can get behind a compromise with the exemptions that you've come up with. She ran some statistic, she said some numbers there and said they were facts. I'm not sure that the vote has been finalized as far as the verification that all those signatures were actual votes, or signatures of the county. I'm not sure those are accurate numbers, because I didn't think that that was finished yet. But I would also like to add that the bar, or the cigar bar owner, I was also approached while I was down paying my business license for St. Charles. I was approached, too, by the petition, and he told me that it was to ban cigarette-smoking 500 feet from a facility, and would I sign it? I said no, simply because I didn't have time to read what he was trying to sell me. I'm just not 100% that they were being honest. Thank you.
I'm Sally Schrafer. I'm a lifelong resident of St. Charles, Missouri, and I don't want to repeat what other people have already said here in the interest of time, but I'd say a lot of my points had to do with what she said. I spent my entire career in medical publishing, and the evidence is clear, you can't refute it about the harm to people from firsthand and secondhand smoke, so I don't want to go over that anymore. But I feel like... But I feel like, as some of the others have stated, that all people are valuable, and the person who works in a casino is just as important as the person who works in a school, or a hospital, or a grocery store. And I think we need to take care of everyone, not have carve-outs in a bill, that some people are more important than others. As far as a lot of business issues already came up regarding this, but we talk about businesses that are already in business, and there might be some short-term concerns or things like that. But I think in the long term, as long as businesses are solid, they stand on their own two legs, businesses usually come out okay, even in terms of having a smoking ban hit them in the short term. And there is evidence to show that healthy communities attract new businesses to the community. Lots of research on the web about improving health improves an economy, and new businesses want to go there. But the one point I also want to make is about pride in St. Charles. I like living here. I'm proud of the heritage. I'm proud of the history of St. Charles, but especially Main Street. But there are a few areas where I think we can't and we shouldn't operate in the past. Infrastructure, healthcare, education, it all needs to move forward. And I think a smoke-free environment also needs to move forward in St. Charles. We can't keep operating like we're in the 1950s, and that's what it seems like to me. Through my many years of working, I've brought lots of visitors to St. Charles to eat, have a good time, people from all across the U.S., people from Europe. They all could not believe that there was still smoking in public establishments here. And I always struggled to come up with a response to them that seemed appropriate because basically, I can't believe it either. So I hope we will move forward and take smoke-free St. Charles complete. Thank you.
Brenda Webb.
Well, good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for, you know, allowing the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. And I'm here to speak in opposition to the smoking ban, mainly because I think, as some of you know, I'm a liberty person, and I'm totally focused on preserving our liberty and the Constitution. And so basically, I feel like, you know, number one, the government, no government was established or set up and not mandated to be an authoritarian nanny. And, you know, basically controlling the lives of people, that is not what the government is supposed to do. And I think probably you each took an oath to the Constitution when you were sworn into office. I know I was on the Central Committee, so I'm sure you were. And, you know, your job is to, or your responsibility, is to uphold the Constitution and our constitutional rights. And so I, you know, want you to protect the constitutional rights of everyone. And I agree, I am not a smoker. I've never been a smoker, have no intentions of ever smoking a cigarette. I don't, it's a stupid thing to do. I agree with that. But the people who want to do it, who have a business, who have a bar, you know, we don't have the right to tell them and to abridge their constitutional right to own and control their own property. That's in both the U.S. Constitution and the state constitution, to enjoy the fruits of our labor and our property. So that's really kind of my main gist. I don't think the government should abridge anyone's rights. The sign on the door is a great idea so that people know, is it a smoking place or not? I don't, I don't go to smoking places either, you know, just because I enjoy it better if it's not, if I'm going to have in a meal. But those that want to, that desire to, and they're a U.S. citizen, they need to have their rights protected. So I just ask you to do that. I ask you to do, you know, the amendments that you've talked about. I haven't read all of them. I just heard about this today, kind of, but, you know, I'm totally in favor of protecting everybody's rights, but that includes smokers. Sorry. Thanks.
And I have one more speaker, Arnie Deanoff. He has miscellaneous agenda items.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. Arnie AC Deanoff, public advocate and resident. Public health and safety is a topic at this evening's county council meeting. St. Charles County tested positive for the West Nile virus. I made a request to the county health department and received a response from Hope Woodson, the director of public health. We need to know where in the county tested positive has occurred, and we have a right to know. Was it a field test or was it in person? According to Ms. Hope Woodson, there's no documents responding to my request. Upon making inquiries to the State Department of Public Health, they know where it is, and Ms. Hope Woodson has a responsibility to our 425 residents to make the West Nile virus known so we can prevent and protect ourselves. I'm shocked, dismayed, and quite frankly embarrassed that the administration and the county council members are wanting to violate our right to vote on a clean and concise smoke-free St. Charles County. You are wrongly, selfishly, and are violating our right to have the first vote on the ballot. As you heard, every county council district submitted 4,500 to 5,000 signatures. You are wrongly violating our right to vote this ballot measure. The Casino, Ameristar, and Station Casino have donated to your campaigns. Does the casino really own and control your vote? I will vouch the fight and bring about public attention and legal action if you do not allow this charter amendment on the November 6 ballot. Shame on you for even considering the will of the people. You're trying to take away our ability and our right to vote. You're wimply coming in at the 23rd hour. You've had seven years to pass an ordinance since this came up on the council agenda from Councilman Cronin and was thrown off the ballot by Judge House in a casino-fired lawsuit. Instead of sitting on your comfy couch while collecting a $750 per meeting or $17,500 annually plus full health insurance, pension, and expense account, why we have not had the opportunity to vote on a smoke-free St. Charles County. This is not the council playing by the rules, but it's rather you going behind 425,000 citizens' back, depriving us the ability, the right, and the vote to have fresh, smoke-free, clean air in St. Charles County. There should be no exemption for any special interest groups or businesses. We need to learn to be a fair, honest, and cutting-edge county government and not be stuck in the dark ages. I predict a 72% to 76% a passage of the petition version that was submitted by Smoke-Free St. Charles County. Sales tax will increase as it did in O'Fallon, 1% to 2%.
Mr. Deanoff, your time's up.
With the category of bar and restaurants. Yes.
Your time's up, sir.
Please defeat this ordinance.
I have no more speaker files. That's it.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
With that, I'll close. Public comment?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and bring forward Bill Number 4631 for discussion.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Motion carries.
If I could, Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
A few things. First and foremost, I've listened to what people have said. I am reading the emails. I am talking to people. And we have been accused of trying to run this thing, ram this thing through on one night's vote. So I'm going to make a motion now that we are not going to vote on it tonight. We are going to, as we do with all of our other ordinances and bills, we're going to have another reading of the same one, which will be held two weeks from tonight, same place, same time. So with that, I'll make a motion to hold this over, hold the vote on this, and tell our next regular scheduled meeting.
Second.
Point of order, I don't think we, did we even read the title of this?
No, we did not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill Number 4631, requested by Mike Klinghammer, sponsored by Dave Hammond. Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance calling for the amendment of the charter in the form of a proposition concerning a county-wide ban on smoking in enclosed public places and enclosed places of employment, with exemptions to the ban regarding smoking in places in which only persons 21 and over are present, regarding 20% of hotel rooms, and regarding private clubs, tobacco-related businesses, and casinos, placing the proposed charter amendments on the November 6, 2018 ballot.
Before we...
I have...
Go ahead.
I think we have some discussion on this bill, so I'll recognize...
Actually, Dave, we have one that's still on. If we could...
I have something pertaining to what you just said. Okay?
We have discussion.
Okay. I agree with Mr. Klinghammer on doing our normal process for simply, for simple reason, is it stated in the charter and council rules that no final vote to county council should be taken until expiration of at least 10 calendar days from the bill was first introduced. So we're following our own rules and our charter by doing so, and that's fine. The second part of it is the first bill that came out, the first, very first bill, also had the signature page for the county executive on it. Same way in the county charter, it says, "All bills passed by the county council shall within five working days be presented to the county executive. County executive approves the bill and signs it, ordinance shall be deemed enacted." Now, in the actual bill, it talks about the Padberg case, and I went back and did a little research, and we've passed every amendment to, everything that we've put on the ballot for charter amendment. We've always done two meetings, we've always referred it to the county executive. That's checks and balances. I think we're making a mistake going away from that, and I would like not to do that because the Padberg case says we don't have to comply with constitutional title requirements for legislation. It doesn't mean we can't comply. And we've always complied to that provision before, two meetings, county executive gets to weigh in, and I think we need to stay with that as well. I think if we don't do that, it's a bad precedent because then four members of this council can put anything on the ballot forever down the road because we're setting a precedent. So I would like to go back to this, how we've done every other amendment. So I would like to also add an amendment to Mr. Klinghammer's amendment. Not only do we do two meetings, but we do our traditional, what's in the rules, and refer the bill to the county executive after we vote on it.
Well, I think, I think...
There's two motions here. You can't do that.
Yeah. I think... Please. I think we already got a motion. I don't want to make it any more complicated, and I want to hear more discussion.
All I would ask is, is Mr. Cronin is correct that this is the first time that we are presented with this option or dilemma, or whatever you want to call it, which I have two things to say. If that's what the law says, Mr. Hazelwood or Joanne, one of you two did the research and you present us with a summary on why we're doing that. If it's a charter amendment and we're allowed that way of making a charter amendment vote, then I would suggest that this council does it on every charter amendment. We don't just do it on this one. We do it on everyone because, in our view, from a council's perspective, it gives us more authority. Okay? Now, if you don't like that, that's fine, but it can't be, it can't be one way on one and one way on the other. It's got to be the way we're going to do it. So that's all I would suggest. So I don't think that your motion, you can maybe bring it up later, but you're dealing with Mike's motion. I agree with what Mike's saying on having two readings because I think since we're having this conversation, people need to understand that we're going to have two readings and we're going to follow that process. Whether or not the county executive has to vote on it is irrelevant to me at this point if that's what we're going to stick to doing it. If Mr. Hazelwood or Mrs. Lykem says that that's what the law says from that '96 or whatever that ruling was, that's whatever, you know, if that's what the law, whatever the law is, is what the law is. But I'm just suggesting that we're not going to go back and forth. We're going to, it's going to be one way or the other.
Yeah, I don't question at all the attorney's interpretation of this. Well, just because it's legal doesn't make it right. Okay? So we can do it.
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the passing this without the county executive being involved. Okay? I know, I think it's legal. I think that they've done the research, but I don't think it's necessarily right. I think we should follow the procedure that we followed in the 10 years that I've been on the council, and that we have two readings, which we obviously are now, and that it goes through the same process that it's gone through with going to the county executive, right?
It's, but...
If I can.
Okay.
Mr. Hammond, I would suggest that we stick to one issue at a time, and then we'll come back and, I think these are good discussions to have, but I think that we probably ought to check them off one at a time, just for the even flow of the meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I got a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor?
On having this come to the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Any further discussion on this bill?
I'd like to make a motion to use our traditional method of sending the bill to the county executive as a courtesy to the county executive to continue the precedent we've used for over, since the charter was initially enacted. And also to quote Padberg, it says, "We do not have to comply." It doesn't say we cannot comply. So I think the law, we don't have our own attorney, but I think that the law is pretty clear that we don't have to follow the Constitution on this. But I think it's a fair thing to do for the citizens of this county art. So I'd like to stay with, the system's worked since the charter was started. I see no sense to breaking it for one case. So I'd like to make a motion that we also require the typical signature on the county executive, no differently than the first bill that Mr. Klinghammer wrote before it was revised.
Second.
My discussion? I don't think that that is something that we, Joanne, does that, or Keith, or whoever, does that have to be decided on tonight? Because we need to know, I think, have further conversations on the, that's a legality memo that you guys sent to us that, you know, we're trying to understand that, is that, is that something we have to put in that form right now, or is that something that we just...
You have the ability to make the decision now, but just so you know, historically, in 2012, when Harold Nellis and I were doing some research, I came across Padberg late in the day one day. Harold and I talked about it, neither of us had ever seen it before. So we called the St. Louis County Councilor because they had a bill for a charter change going in front of their council, and it had a county executive's signature on it per the news stories that we had read about it. And the first assistant county councilor that I talked to said that Padberg wasn't good law, but said that they would call us back in a few minutes. The county councilor herself at the time called back and said, "Oh, it is good law. It's absolutely good law, but our council doesn't choose to use it." They always have that option. They can always ask us to prepare a bill for them without the county executive's signature and do it in a single meeting, but they don't choose to do that because that's not how our charter reads. So I think, you know, your point is, is that you can make the decision on a case-by-case basis. You can do whatever you need to do in terms of deciding when things should go to the county executive, and you want his way in or her way in in the future. The whole issue is before the council as to how you want to handle it.
So that's what we're going to be discussing right now, under Councilman Cronin's...
Motion in second.
Motion in second. Okay?
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
I know, we did, I went back and looked also. We did receive a memo back in 2012 about this particular case. Quite frankly, I didn't remember it, and when we were talking about this particular issue, I didn't know that was even a possibility. Administration asked to add that particular whereas language onto the bill. It did not come from me. It is not something that I was trying to contrive a different way to put this forward. It was asked by administration, put it on. I agreed to it because I have good case law to back it up that says it is a possibility of a way to do it. So just to set the record straight on, it was not something that I was trying to...
May I just suggest that this is such a legal complexity that we just wait to get the facts from them before we debate this particular, because the bill is more of an interest to debate than this particular aspect of it.
Yeah, and I think county executive's position is pretty clear on this. He's already made that clear the last time this came before us. Go ahead.
Two things. I guess one is Joanne clearly stated that we can use Padberg case-by-case basis. That's what I heard. So if we don't want to use it for this one and we want to follow the traditional rules, we sure can. Secondly, in 2014, after this decision, after this memo was given to us, we put the conflict of interest amendment before the voters. Okay? So two years after Padberg... So, two years after Padberg, we did approve a charter amendment, okay? Put it to the voters, and it did get approved. And we didn't use Padberg then, county executive signed it like normal. Okay? I think, I think by using Padberg in this case, I, I do think it's fair to the 34,000 folks that signed this. I think they need to know the, this position of administration as well. And I'm quite frankly shocked that the administration would ask, to sponsor this bill, to use this 1966 obscure case, to not have the administration, so to speak, have some skin in the game on this. So, for that reason, I'd, I'd like to... I would, I would like to, I would like to do the traditional way we've always done charter amendments, put them to voters, is two meetings and passed on to the county executive.
Well...
I just, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm not supporting his motion. I, I don't think that, that, as always, our legal team gives us their opinions, and we listen to them, and I think it's important to listen to them. We can always do this at the next meeting, but we, we can't sit there and hash this, this particular issue out right now, and we all agreed to go to the second meeting. So, we have a second meeting anyway. So, I don't think it's a good idea to do this right now, because we don't know the legal facts.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, and I would not vote for this amendment.
I won't either. So, what, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
I'm sorry, one other thing I'd like to point out, that it's the timing of things. This has, any action that we take has to be at the election authority by the 28th of this month. If we agree, which we already have, that we're going to wait and have a second, second hearing on this, which would be Monday, the 27th, that would give the county executive less than 24 hours to either sign or not sign, or veto the, the action that we take, whatever action that ends up being, on the 27th of, of this month. So, it doesn't really give the executive the, the traditional 10 days of, of time to review something before he either chooses to sign it, veto it, or let it go through without, without his executive.
Good point. So, I got a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Why don't we call the roll on that, please?
This is to support Councilmember Cronin's amendment and Councilmember Hollander's second. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
No.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
No.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
No.
Councilmember White?
No.
That motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, could I do something rather unusual?
What's that?
I would encourage the seven of you, my understanding is, Joanne actually sent you the case within the last few days. If she did not, we certainly will. This, this is surprising to you, to be honest, it may be surprising to anyone else who would read it, but I think it would help you to make a reasoned decision about whether or not to ask for the county executive's involvement, if you would read that opinion. If I could ask the seven of you to do that, you will, I think, have a much better way to react to this issue when it comes up in front of you in a couple of weeks.
Okay. I don't understand, Mr. Hazelwood. Do you mean...
Mr. Chair?
Rescind our vote, or we vote?
No, no, not at all. You've done, you've done what you've done. I'm saying, in the next couple of weeks, take the time to read the case.
Okay.
I think you'll, you'll, you'll have a much better understanding of the rationale of that decision, if you actually read it and digest what the court was dealing with in 1966.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Cronin.
I have a question. Could you, Keith, could you also tell us why we didn't follow Padberg in 2014? Okay? When we, when we passed a charter amendment for that, I mean, as part of your report to us?
Yeah.
And also, could you also ask us if, 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 what I, I did read Padberg, and I agree with what Joanne said, it can be used on a case-to-case basis. Bear in mind that if we use this on this particular bill...
Right.
We can go back and use this for any charter amendment that we want to, with four votes and no veto input from the county executive. And that's a dangerous situation.
My advocacy is not that you take any particular position, it's that you vote, when you vote on it, knowing what the court said was its reason for advancing this law. By the way, this, this, this law, you all are talking about it arising in 1966 and being pretty obscure. This case actually is citing a 1798, I'm talking 220 years ago, decision by the Supreme Court of the United States, that dealt with how to process the 11th Amendment. So, in my mind, you, you know, we all would like to have precedent and be guided by something that's solid and, and gives us certainty in our dealings with each other. We're going back 220 years to, to, to support the position that was taken in this case. I think it's well worth the while of the seven of you, when you come back on the 27th, to have the benefit of having read that opinion. And I, I would hope, it sounds like you've already done it, and I would hope you might agree with that. I'm not asking you to take any position on how you handle it, just read, read the case and know what it had to say as to what the rationale was for that particular decision in 1966.
Okay. No more comments on...
Let's talk about the bill.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, let's, let's get to the meat of this thing, enough with the legalities, which some of us understand and some of us don't, but let's, let's discuss this particular ordinance.
Well, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Okay. Well, first of all, I, I, like most of the people in the county here, were very pleased when I read in the newspaper that the American Heart Association had gathered 34,000 signatures. That's very, very, very impressive. This was an issue that we, at least three or four of us on this council, battled seven years ago, about, back and forth for a, a number of different times. I was quite, I don't know, taken off guard, or maybe, I guess I was just out of the blue about a week ago, when this particular ordinance, all of a sudden, popped up. You know, to say it stinks, I think it, it stinks. All right? Somebody asked me how much it stinks. It stinks like a worker that's worked in a smoking environment for eight hours and smelling their clothes. That's how bad it stinks. Four pages, four pages of exemptions. Okay? In reality here, folks, let's, let's really clear ourselves. This is just basically saying, "We're not doing anything, we're just keeping things the same."
Amen.
All right? Four pages of exemptions. Okay? When I took this job, or was voted into this position 10 years ago, most difficult thing that I had to do was to try to figure out how my constituents felt on an issue. I mean, I get two or three emails and a phone call here and there, but I represent, you know, 55,000 people. How do I really know how they feel? Well, on this issue, it's pretty clear. 5,000 people in my district said, "We want this smoke-free ordinance on the ballot." Okay? I haven't gotten 5,000 responses on any issue in the 10 years that I've been on the council, but on this one, 10,000 people said, or 5,000 people said, "This is, this is how we, this is what we want." Let's, let's not confuse this. Basically, 34,000 people in this county have said that they would like to see this measure on the ballot the way it was turned in by the American Heart Association. I don't see how four of us, just four of us, can change that. All right? And that's all it takes. It really only takes four people on this to get this particular issue on the ballot with, with the other one. The third thing is, you know, where were a lot of the folks that are calling for this? Where were they seven years ago? Some of the people were on opposite sides. Mrs. Golds, I remember you, seven years ago, you were fighting like crazy against that casino, you know, one exemption that you didn't get. Okay? But now you're on the same side with them. All right? So, things are a little, things, things have changed in seven years. All of a sudden, some people that have become partners, weren't partners seven years ago. And then finally, let's, let's not kid ourselves, this isn't about private businesses making choices, this is about the casino. This is a one-issue deal. All right? One-issue deal. And, you know, to hear the city of St. Charles say, "Oh, woe is me, we're going to lose this income." The truth of the matter was, when this casino was pulling in the revenue X number of years ago, they told the public, "We will not become reliant on that casino money. No, we will not." Well, here it is, and they're telling us tonight that they are reliant on that casino money. So, I, 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 I just don't, I just don't think that that is, is genuine. It's a casino issue. We all know that. All right? So, that, that's my thoughts. My thoughts are, the people have spoken, the people of St. Charles County will have a chance in November to vote, they're going to pass this. That's why this, that's why this ordinance is being introduced, because everybody knows that the American Heart Association language will be passed. So, now, all of a sudden, so, whoa, wait a minute, we don't want that, we want something else, so let's get this ordinance in there, so it'll be different. So, let's, so there'll be two competing ordinances, if for some reason we, we go along with this. So, that's my, that's my thoughts.
I was opposed to the smoking ban years ago. I'm opposed to the one that the American Cancer Society came up with. I am in favor of this one that we're trying to do, and Terry is absolutely right, we are doing this to create an optional ordinance. And this, when, when, when you say that 35,000 people signed that petition, that is a load of bogus crap. Okay? And I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why. Here's exactly why. You guys are paying people, you are paying people per signature, you're paying them a dollar, or whatever the hell it was, per signature. This lady came up to me at the New Melli Fair, I told you guys this, she started talking to me about this smoking ban, and everything she said was not true. She got rude, and she, she, I was with my kids, my wife, I told her, "Ma'am, you're wrong." And she says, "There's already a smoking ban in O'Fallon, and all we're doing is just making it consistent with everyone else." I said, "Well, this is on our corporate account, we don't have a smoking ban." "Oh, yes, you do. You have a smoking ban, and that's what we need to do." The fact is, is your petitioners weren't telling the truth, and these people just signed them to get these crazy people away from them. That's what they were doing. The other thing is, 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 look, I appreciate what you people are doing for the health of everybody else. No, but listen to me, sir, I didn't talk when you people talked, okay? Here's the thing, is I guarantee about all of you in the blue shirts have never owned a business in your life, and I also bet that you have not been in a... You own a law firm, ma'am, but you do not own a hospitality industry, okay? It's a hard business. Okay? So, now, listen, I let you all talk, okay? So, you've got a bunch of nanny goats telling everybody else what's better for everybody else? Come on! That's ridiculous. It's absolutely a, a violation of people's constitutional rights. You're telling me the people down at the VFW in New Melli, and Terry is 100% wrong, it has nothing to do with casino, I don't care about the casino, I'm all the way down in Augusta, Missouri in defiance, okay? We got farmers, we got hard-working people down there, they go into Terry and Kathy's, they want to smoke their cigarettes and drink their beer, I don't go in there, but you're telling them they don't have a right to do that? Are you telling the people at the New Melli VFW that fought in wars, to, for, for, for people's freedom of choice, that they can't smoke in the VFW or the American Legion? If you don't want to go in there, don't go in there. That's all there is to it. I don't, I don't understand, I do not understand this. If you're in construction, I'm in the roofing business, it's a dangerous job. I choose to work for the roofing business. If you work, if you're a police officer, it's a dangerous job. If you want to work in a restaurant where they smoke and you're 21 and over, don't you think it's your choice? It's your decision. So, I don't understand why all these do-gooders come in here and try and tell other people how to live their lives. It's wrong. Okay? It's the beginning of the end. Okay? And you, and you guys, I, I mean, look, I appreciate your perspective, but I've been sitting here listening to this stuff, "No, sir, it's my turn." And so, I, I'm just saying that if you... By the way, me and my wife, we've, we've been barrooms for five years, and guess what we got in our bar? We have a big restaurant, it says, "No smoking." It's our choice. Okay? We have a great business. It's our choice. But I don't want someone telling me that that's someone else, "You can't smoke." No, we put our $500,000 in the business, I don't see any of you people out there giving us money and making business decisions for me. It's wrong.
Public's comment's over, sir. Sir? Any more outbursts like that, you'll be removed. Anybody else?
Just, just in response to Joe, you know, we were on the council together seven years ago when this, you know, occurred, and, and if I remember correctly, pretty much this same ordinance was what you voted against seven years ago. Okay?
I did? No, absolutely. Let's, no, let's, let's be clear here. Let's be 100% clear. I am against any smoking ban. I am against the government infringing on people's property rights and business decisions. Okay? However, like you said, this is an ordinance to circumvent the other ordinance. Okay? Let's be real, that's exactly what it is. So, what we're doing, what we're doing is, we're trying to create an option. Listen to me. This is giving people a choice. You can vote for this, or you can vote for this. This one gives businesses the right to choose, along with the patrons the right to choose. And that's what it is. It's about freedom of choice, and that's all. I don't smoke, I never have. Okay? But it's about choice. And I'm sorry that you guys, this is a, this is a philosophy, it's a personal principle of mine, and I'm sorry you don't agree with me, but I'm just being straight-up honest.
I would say one thing that I disagree with you about is, this is not an either-or.
Well, no, I mean, I didn't really mean that. I, I, yeah.
I just want to be clear.
No, no, it, no, I agree.
So, if, if this ordinance does end up on the ballot...
That's right.
It does not stop anyone from voting for the other issue.
That is correct.
If it's on, people have the choice, the freedom to vote for either one or vote for both. So, if both end up there, you can vote for both issues. If you're really against smoking, you can do that. Karen and I have had this discussion, geez, I'm the new guy, I've been here five years. I wasn't here seven years ago. Sounds like I missed a party. But Joe Aiello is in my district, and I struggle with an all-out ban, because I watched Joe go from a small, little shop in a strip mall, and he had a franchise back then, if I remember right. Joe built that business, he put it under his name, he built a building, and now he's got a great bocce ball, a bocce ball court out there. He's got people who come from all over the region, and they come for one reason, they want to buy a good cigar, they want to sit there, they want to smoke a cigar and have a drink and enjoy a great place that Joe built. I struggle for people like Joe. I mean, he's got a bank loan, man, to cover. So, Karen and I know, every time she brings this up to me, she will tell you, "I mentioned Joe Aiello by name, because I feel sorry for a guy, he's a small business." And our county is going to rise or fall based on small businesses. I'm not saying smoking small businesses, just to be clear, but small businesses are really going to determine where we go as a county. The casino is not going to make or break us as a county. Small businesses are. And I struggle for people like Joe, who, they put their fat in the fire when they signed that line and said, "I'll take the bank loan." And I feel bad for that. So, I struggle with, with stuff like this, but I appreciate people like Joe who, who engage and they're following their dream.[1719.51] So, I struggle with stuff like this, but I appreciate people like Joe who engage and they're following their dream. So, good for you.
Can I call somebody up to ask them questions?
Sure.
May I ask Karen to come forward, please? I appreciate all your difficulty and hard work in bringing this forward. And I would like to know, what consideration does the American Heart Association have for this gentleman that does have this business? Is there any way that he can still operate his business if this bill passes?
Sure. So a couple just points of clarification. So the American Heart Association is one of the over-40 endorsing organizations. We are one of the funders of this. So Smoke Free St. Charles County and Show Me Smoke Free turned in all of the signatures. It was not just us. So we can't take the credit or the blame, however you wanna do it, for getting us there. We are very proud of those efforts, though. Our organization invested over a million dollars in making St. Charles County a better place for people to live. So we do have some skin in the game as well. In response to your question, I would say that Joe, as a small business owner, has already done some amazing, amazing things. He's already created a business that can sustain. He has an outdoor space. And as part of what we have put forth, outdoor areas that are not completely enclosed still function. They will not be impacted. And so he's already done those things. You know, I don't wanna speak for him. He is a small business owner. He has done an amazing job. I am a daughter of a small business owner, right? I understand that. My dad went to work every day, broke his back, doing work as a small business owner. But one thing we have to consider is, as a business owner of any kind, a small business or a large business, you have to adapt.
So, in your opinion, his business will still succeed, just as all the businesses in Illinois that are in a similar situation as his?
Objection, you're leading the witness.
Overruled.
I think absolutely yes. I mean, again, Joe has done an amazing job. I mean, he has gone from a small in-cap in a strip mall to building an amazing facility. And we are no way telling people, "You can't smoke," right? We're not doing that. We're telling people, "Please step outside. Please be thoughtful of the people around you." Because secondhand smoke continues to kill over 1,100 Missourians a year.
You know, I just wanted to ask you about his situation, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Just, please, please be, please just, just be careful. I was gonna call you up next.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Aiello to come up, please. May I do that, Mr. Chairman?
How you guys doing?
Illinois is completely smoke-free. And some of the establishments that I have visited over there do very well, because they worked it so that their smokers have a facility to smoke in outside, or similar to being outside. Do you feel that your facility could do the same thing? Like, to name one place is Fast Eddie's in Alton. Do you feel like you could duplicate that situation, where you could still survive and still...
It would cost me probably about $100,000. I would have to expand. I would have to enclose all that area. What are the rules? What are their rules for enclosing?
Didn't Fast Eddie's have to do the same thing?
I haven't been to Fast Eddie's since I lived in Spanish Lake in the '70s. It was a little corner bar back then.
But all the bars over there have done similar things.
Correct. And right now, I have a patio, and I have sides that drop down.
Okay.
So, is that still considered outside? So, I can, I would have to expand my patio. I would have to enclose everything. I would have to heat everything. About $100,000. I've been looking into it. Don't have $100,000. Can the Cancer Society pay for that? Since they think I'm gonna succeed? Why do I have an inside place? I mean, I built the inside for people to sit in, enjoy sports, have a drink, and have a cigar. Not everybody sits outside.
Well, if it was Illinois, they probably would pay you, because they're broke anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Brazel.
Okay, I just wanted to hear from both of you to get that education for myself.
So, I mean, it would cost me a lot of money. It would cost me a lot of money. I just don't quite understand the thought that I am a cigar bar. That's what people come to me for. And if you don't like smoke, if you don't like tobacco, you will never come in. Makes sense, right? So why not an exemption for anybody? But the owner should have that right. The owner should have the right. Put a sign in the window and make everybody happy. You can go to O'Fallon and smoke free. There's, what restaurants...
You know, I just asked you about whether you could survive. It sounds like you could survive, but it would cost you some money.
It's gonna cost me a lot of money, Karen.
Okay.
I don't know. Very, I don't know. There are very few restaurants in this county that do allow smoking, but...
They don't.
But go ahead, Mr. Cronin, you got a question?
I just have a question for Joe, because I mean, I guess your bar, it's more a bar now. When we first talked before, it was more of a cigar store.
It's still a tobacco store. Still a tobacco store. It's even a bigger tobacco store than it ever was.
Okay, let me just tell you. When I go to the liquor store, and I'm an Irish guy, so I drink, I go to a liquor store a few times. I can't, if I buy a handy six-pack or I buy a bottle of wine, I can't pop open a can of beer and taste it in there or take a swig out of a bottle of wine. So I don't see how there's a huge inconvenience for your customers not to be able to smoke at a cigar store, okay? I mean, they can step out in the patio, okay?
Wait, say that again.
I don't see how it's any different for your customers not being able to smoke inside an enclosed public building than for me to go in and not being able to crack open a beer in a liquor store. Same principle, okay? No, it's your, I'm both, you're buying, we're both talking about buying an adult product.
Correct.
I'm not using it on the premises inside of the liquor store. And your folks that are buying cigars from you can either take them home and smoke them in the comfort of their home, or they can even go out in the patio and smoke them. At a liquor store, you don't even have the option of drinking out in the patio, okay? I will tell you too, that, you know, in Kansas City and a lot of other areas, the bars actually did a lot more business by having those patios, because it gave them increased capacity. Joe, did the guys try out your lawnmowers at your lawnmower store before they buy them? Outside. Same thing.
I would just be curious to know if O'Fallon put a lawnmower ban in, how you would react to that? If they said, "No lawnmowers." If people off the street came in and said, "We're getting signatures to ban lawnmowers." What would you do?
If they killed 66 people a year, which is the estimated amount of people get killed by secondhand smoke, I wouldn't be selling them, Paula, okay? Department of Senior Services says that 1,100 people a year die from secondhand smoke in the state of Missouri. We have 6% of the population at 66 people. How many of those kids that were in here, okay, that were here from STEM night to night? How many of those kids probably working fast food to save, or restaurants to bus tables to save money for college, or buy cars, or pay their payments, or whatever? You know, I know my daughter had to work at a restaurant bussing tables that smoked. It was an Olive Garden in St. Peters, okay? And it was hell far.
Why didn't she work for you?
Pardon me?
Why didn't she work for you?
Because of the fact that she doesn't, we hire big guys that can move heavy pieces of equipment.
She could sell.
Yeah.
I got my two kids working for me, and you're gonna cost them their job.
What I'm saying is, it's a public health thing, and I understand your concerns, but there's also 66 people a year that are silently, slowly dying, because that's the science of the issue.
Don't come in! Don't come in! It's just a matter of your choice of not, you don't have to come in. Mr. Cronin, if you don't like smoke, you don't come in, correct? So it's your choice. These guys wanna come in, relax, have a cigar, have a drink, and watch the Cardinals beat up on somebody. So, the bottom line is, it's your choice to come into my store. If you come in my store, you're coming in probably to buy a cigar or to have a cigar. It's their choice.
I would point out, just real quick, Mr. Cronin, that in 2009, 20,000 people were killed by lawnmowers. And 300,000 people suffered some type of injury. So I just wanted, on behalf of all of us, we appreciate you stopping to sell lawnmowers to help the people in the county. I'm sorry, I just had to do that.
But nobody got killed inside of a building from one, probably.
I don't know. That statistic is not recorded. I'll have to talk to the CDC.
If we're talking to people up here, though, I did ask, I did ask a gentleman from the city of St. Charles to come up. I have a question for him. That's why I asked him to stay. Just a quick one. It's about a legal matter.
I first wanna say, you know, I occasionally like a cigar, and I like to go into your store, and I can actually sit and have a beer and smoke a cigar. But, and I hate to see that we come to a point where we're telling businesses how to run their business, so I'm gonna support this bill. Would you like to come up and answer a couple of questions? You don't have to.
This is some information that I don't think has been brought up at all, and I think it's important. And I wanna make sure you're aware of it, okay? Back when we were going through this battle back in 2012, on behalf of the city of St. Charles, Representative Kurt Barr and Senator Andrew Koenig from St. Louis County passed a bill in the state legislature called 192.1, or .310, and allows the city of St. Charles basically to not abide by any county health ordinance, okay, if they set up their own health department. So if the casino revenue is so important to you folks, and I get that, I understand that, okay? This bill was written strictly for you folks, so you could get away from that and allow smoking in the casino, even if we pass a comprehensive law in the county. You had this passed by two state representatives in the center, okay? And I remember at the time joking with Sally Faith, I said, "Sally, you're gonna have to weigh, is your casino revenue gonna go up, down enough to pay for a health department or not, okay?" Because that's what it boils down to. Health department, casino revenue, okay? So you are aware of this, right?
I am, sir.
Okay. Well, I don't think this has been reported to the public, and I think folks that say, "Well, boys, we've gotta not do this, because it's gonna kill the casino, or it's gonna kill downtown St. Charles." They've got an option, okay? We don't have that option out in my district, okay? So, I think that's an important distinction. That's why I asked you to stay. Thank you.
Sir, the only thing from the city's perspective is, again, just to put on the ballot. Not disagreeing with anything you're saying.
The problem with two ballot languages, and we have, I distributed some, Bob Hink, our attorney here, is it's gonna require a lot of lawsuits to settle that. Because if both get passed, they both become law. And then you have two conflicting legal terms inside of them, requirements. So it's gonna require more taxpayer money, it's gonna be more lawsuits. It's gonna be a nightmare, okay? So that's the reason why I support one ballot, okay? The, when people say that this particular bill wasn't written by the casino, this is the casino's petition, okay? The current bill's got 12 exemptions on it. This one's got 12 too. Surprise, surprise. Now, they tried their opportunity to get their 34,000 votes and they, or signatures, and they didn't, okay? But, I mean, this whole bill, I agree with Councilman Hollander, it's all about the casino. You all got an option. Let the people out in Wentzville and O'Fallon and my district and our corporate areas breathe freely. If you all wanna, if you don't wanna protect your workers at the casino, then do your own health department, okay? Opt out, okay? You guys have that option. You know, you got it done with the state legislature.
Well, Joe, I don't think it's just the casino, because there's business owners here that are opposed to it too. So, it's not just about the casino. Mike, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I did. Thank you. I think the, Mr. Brazel, you have, you're excused.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for coming and attending tonight. We certainly appreciate that. I think we're, the discussion's kinda gotten a little bit askew. What we're talking about tonight really is not, Mr. Brazel, is not trying to circumvent one versus the other. What we're talking about tonight is offering the voters a choice between two smoking bans. And I absolutely agree with smoking bans. I, you know, Mr. Young, Don has done an outstanding job for many years educating people about the dangers of smoking. And we have seen the results of that. More and more restaurants themselves and the bars, a lot of ours on Main Street now, have made the choice themselves whether or not they want to do that. And now we have better-educated consumers that are choosing to go to those restaurants and bars that are non-smoking. And I am one of those. I go, the restaurants that my family and I like to go to are the ones that have put in non-smoking, and it has increased their business. So, am I in favor of smoking bans? Absolutely. I choose to go to restaurants and bars that are non-smoking. And I think that the evidence that Don has been preaching to our kids and to our civic groups for years is dead-on, absolutely correct. And I hope that you continue to do that. I like the process of choice, though. This is where we're gonna separate a little bit. I think that business owners, the ones that invest in their properties, get to make the decision whether they want to have patrons that are smokers or non-smokers. Ultimately, though, it is not for this council or this debate here to decide any of that. What we're talking about is, do we allow the voters a choice of a straight-up 100% smoking ban? And there are a lot of people that believe that that is the route that we should go. Or should we have a smoking ban again that will protect our families? Will not, you know, we're not talking about letting any smoke in at all where our kids present. We're not doing that. We're gonna say there is a smoking ban. And businesses that primarily serve the adult market, the people that are able to make their own decisions for themselves, will make a decision whether or not they want to patronize that or not. People are gonna get a choice. I'm not making the decision for them. I know how I personally am gonna vote. How I'm personally gonna vote, though, is nothing to do with giving the voters of St. Charles County the option. And they need to know what the implications are for that. Over 80% of my constituents, and Mr. Hollander talks well of addressing his constituents, over 80% of my constituents live in the city of St. Charles that will have a negative impact into the quality of services that their government delivers if this goes in. I'm not gonna argue exactly what that impact is or isn't. The evidence shows that there will be an impact. We also know that those revenue dollars that are coming into the city of St. Charles are used for salaries. One of two things has to happen then. Either services go down, or taxes go up. They have to find out, there is no magic pill that is suddenly gonna make more revenue available if the dollars, in fact, go down. I don't know what the answer is. I do not. I'm saying, let's let the voters make an informed decision on their own. It is not to try to confuse the issue. It, some people may be confused by it. Anybody that goes and studies it, and the way that I've asked Mr. Hink, the author of this, that put the legalese to it, we purposely tried to align the two, or the two competing charter amendments so that people will be able to see the direct consequences or actions of both of them. They line up very well against each other, so that people will understand what it is they're voting for. And they can make their own decision. I'm not gonna make it for them. Personally, I think that, you know, a level playing field for our businesses is something that governments are supposed to do. If this passes in St. Louis and doesn't pass here, then we're gonna have an advantage over St. Louis County. That is not the way that it should be. My opinion, this should be a statewide issue. It is not for each county or each city to argue about and try to figure it out. One of the things that I also wanna point out, that if this particular charter amendment goes on and is passed, if that happens, it will not affect O'Fallon and Lake St. Louis. They already have very strict non-smoking bans in their communities. We're not gonna suddenly say, this does not change that. They're not, the bar owners are not gonna be suddenly say, "Well, I'm gonna be a smoker, smoking establishment now." Those communities already made that decision. We're not trying to change the decision that they already did. Again, that's, the underlying thing is, I want the voters to have the option and know the consequences of their vote that they pass. How it's gonna affect their city, for my constituents, how it's gonna affect the city of St. Charles. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with what Mike says, but, to a point, I agree with just having one, one thing on the ballot gives people the option. It's up to the good people here that have the businesses and the city of St. Charles to make their point to the voters. I feel it's unfair that we're coming in at 11th hour with this bill. I think the same thing could happen. I mean, these good people can make their point and not argue to us about it, but argue to the public. They have their chance to do that. I don't think we need to have two bills. They have the opportunity to decide for themselves. They have to decide whether for the business people or for total. And they're gonna vote that way. They're gonna either vote up or down. So I'm for just one bill, and I'm not gonna support this bill at all. And I ask that, I would ask that the people that brought this, if you brought this bill forward, to ask three people to concur and withdraw it.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
No, I haven't had, I got to talk to a witness. I didn't get to put my two cents worth in, okay?
As long as it's only two cents.
You got it, okay? I wrote more smoke-free ordinances than anybody in this room, so you're gonna have to give me a little leeway here. But one of the things I was reading where Mr. Krizner rejected one of the amendments I put together, he says amending... I put together, he says, "Amending the St. Charles County Charter should be a very sobering and structured process. A process that should require thoughtful deliberation and consultation, a process that should never be undertaken in a way that these bills were hurried through with little consideration by the language as defined by the county charters, federal and state laws." This was Mr. Krismer's letter to me back in 12, 2012, with a charter amendment that we had spent months and months and months working on, okay? So I don't like the way, I agree with Councilman White, I don't like the way this was run through at the last minute, and I'm pretty good at reading amendments and language, and there's some language in this bill that's got a problems that we haven't even discussed tonight. For instance, it exempts smoking or use of medically prescribed marijuana or cannabis within such locations as approved by any state law. You go across 30 miles from here in Illinois, and you'll see billboard, "Stop here for medical marijuana." They got doctors on premises, "My back is sore," they'll fix you up with some of that wacky tobaccy. So that means you can take that over to St. Charles County and smoke that in an enclosed public place, according to Mike's bill. That's wrong. That's bad for our kids, that's a horrible thing to do. They wanna smoke this at home, if they wanna smoke it at home, and it maybe helps their medical condition, fine. But that should be exempt, there's no place for that to be an exception, okay? I mean, there's a lot, I found other flaws in this too. We're rushing this, we're rushing it too fast, okay? Charter amendments can be changed by another charter amendment. Let the American Health Association do their thing on this ballot, okay? Let them have theirs. If the casino and the other businesses are affected, wanna put a separate one on the ballot down the road, fine, they should have that opportunity too. But if we do, if both of them go through, we have two very bad outcomes that could happen. One is, many of us agree that we need, even Joe agrees, that he's fine with putting something on the ballot and smoke-free St. Charles County, to some levels, desirable thing. Well, if neither one pass, then the American Heart Association, and a lot of other good charities, just ticked away a million dollars of charitable donations trying to improve the health of this county. The other thing is, I think we ought to have a report from Hope Woodson, how the hell she's gonna handle two completely different charter changes if they both get passed. How is she gonna do that? I feel sorry for you, Hope, because I don't know how the hell you're gonna do it, okay? How much, and how many, I'd like the estimate from County Legal, how many hundreds of thousands of dollars we might be spending in court costs if we put two things on the ballot. So there's some stuff that we haven't answered, and I just wanted to bring that up, that before the next meeting, maybe we can get some answers to that. Why is the medical marijuana thing on here? And I can see where it might say Missouri state law, but it says any state law. And medical marijuana's legal 30 miles east of here.
Well, it's not legal here, so I don't know why we're even talking about it.
Because it's, Dave? Because it's in the bill.
Mr. Hammond, one last thing. And this is, you know, this is something I think all of us can agree on, this is what I'm asking to happen. One of the things that we do not know for sure at this point is whether the Director of Elections is going to certify those 34,000 signatures. According to what is there, he is, does not have to reveal that until August the 28th, okay? What I'm asking the council to do is to respectfully submit to the Director of Elections a request that he finish that decision by August 27th, so that when we meet here on the 27th, we will know whether or not those signatures and the American Heart Association petition will be on the ballot or not. Would, do I get the support of the other six councilmen?
Absolutely.
Okay. So what I'm asking for is for us as a council to request to Mr. Krismer to make a decision 24 hours earlier than he's required by law, to tell us whether or not that issue, the American Heart Association issue, will actually be on the ballot.
I would suggest one other thing, so that we don't get a letter like I just quoted from. Maybe this particular, Mike's bill, needs to go to Krismer's office too, to see if Krismer would certify that for the ballot, okay? Because it may not, okay? He may very well not, okay?
Okay.
I don't know what the second one, I know the first one.
I would make a motion to return to our previous agenda.
Well, we don't need a motion for that, that's a decision I can make right now.
Excellent.
So, our next item is, oral report, you got anything tonight, Mr. Executive?
I don't have a report, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments. First of all, regarding the bill, I was not a sponsor, I did not request it. With regard to what you do about this Padberg case, what Mr. Krismer does, I think whether Padberg applies or not ultimately is gonna be decided by a judge someday. Obviously, I would rather see my role maintained, but, you know, we've had this discussion several times, and there's been times when the county counselor has basically agreed with me, and you all haven't necessarily agreed with him. This is an example where he's agreeing with Padberg, or at least taking a position on it, that I may not necessarily agree with. But what we don't want to get into is what they have in St. Louis County, where you have the taxpayers paying for two different lawyers, and the county executive and the council arguing back and forth and going to court. So let's make sure we don't ever get into that situation, and we'll just proceed and see what happens here.
Okay. So, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I move to accept.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes.
Next item is bills for introduction. Bill 4623.
Bill number 4623, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, federal project STP 7302669, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $1,500,000 for work associated with the construction of an interchange at Route 364 and Gudermuth Road.
Any questions or comments on that bill? Hearing none, move on to Bill 4624.
Bill number 4624, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, federal project STP 5664606, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $1,096,000 for work associated with the realignment, reconstruction of the route and Weas Road intersection.
Any questions or comments on that bill? Hearing none, move on to Bill 4625.
Bill number 4625, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, federal project STP 7302673, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $440,000 for work associated with the replacement of a deficient bridge on Seaburger Road.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, let's move on to Bill 4626.
Bill number 4626, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute surface transportation program agreement, federal project STP 7302672, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 60% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $235,000 for work associated with the removal and realignment of a curve on Schwedie Road.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, let's move on to Bill 4627.
Bill number 4627, requested by Craig Takowski, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute the Transportation Alternatives Funds Program Agreement, federal project TAP 7303617, with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for allocation of funds to 80% of the eligible costs, up to a maximum amount of $559,700 for work associated with the construction of a multi-use trail along a portion of Pittman Hill Road.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, let's move on to Bill 4628.
Bill number 4628, requested by David Todd, sponsored by council as a whole, and ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with political subdivisions within St. Charles County to create a regional emergency management agency as part of the county's Division of Emergency Management.
Yes.
I'd like to give kudos to Chief Todd for this. I read it, I read his letter to us, and it's a good first step towards regional cooperation for that new building, so, Mr. Hunt, would you make sure you tell Dave Todd, give the boss a pat in the back, tell him it's a great thing what he did there?
Can I add some kudos for Holly Maggosh, who actually wrote it?
Okay.
Kudos for you. Any other comments?
Hearing none, let's move on to Bill 4629.
Bill number 4629, requested by Michelle McBride, sponsored by Dave Hammond, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a third amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Wentzville for collection of taxes.
Any comments or questions on this bill? Hearing none, let's move on to 4630.
Bill number 4630, requested by Ruth Rollins and Bob Schnurr, sponsored by Dave Hammond, and ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the Personnel Administration Plan adopted by Ordinance 17-110, including but not limited to benefits, and amending the 2018 budget adopted by Ordinance 17-113 for positions within the St. Charles County Department of Facilities Management.
Any comments?
I just have a question. As a part of this, one of the items was the Assistant Director of Facilities, moving that to a 303, the grade 303?
Yes, sir.
But my concern is, there's other, there's actually division heads that are, directors of divisions that are that same grade, and I'm not sure why we're doing that.
We have a group of directors in some of those larger departments that are in some of our highest pay classifications, and then their division directors are typically in a couple of pay grades lower. So then some of our smaller departments, it's typically a size type of thing, are at that level of those pay grades where some of those division directors are. So that's part of HR's, well, now, three-year review cycle of all pay grades. So those have recently been studied to make sure that they're in the right place, and this is one that popped up that needed some adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer, what is the 303, what is the pay on that, and what is the qualifications?
I don't have that in front of me, is Ruth still here? Do you happen to have the pay grade in front of you? Can you come up to the microphone?
Is this a new position being created?
No, it's just a reclassification of the current assignment.
And this person would be under our Director of Facilities?
Yesterday.
What is the pay on that?
The pay for 303 starts at $76,690, goes up to $120,481.
Was, I guess you haven't, you said you haven't got the qualification, you haven't done the description yet on it?
This is a currently existing Assistant Director of Facilities Management.
So if it's as currently as existing, why are we jumping up the pay so much?
Because they've made some reorganization changes and assigning different personnel to this classification of position.
With more responsibilities?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments on that bill? Hearing none, let's move on to Bill 4631.
We're done.
And that was the smoking bill, so we are finished with that one.
Let's talk about that some more. Just kidding.
Any announcements or miscellaneous? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed, motion carries.